All right. That's.
All right. Turn it's firing it up, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you for waiting for us. I appreciate that. Apologize for that delay. Okay, we're gonna start up with the pledge of allegiance. Flag to my left.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic where we stand as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, just as a reminder, whoever's speaking may take their. So just for the purposes of interpretation and definitely not in very community place.
Okay, first off is the vote to approve the minutes of December ninth, twenty twenty one. Has everyone had a chance to read those minutes?
Yes.
Does anybody have any objections to them or corrections?
No.
So, okay. Seeing no objections and no corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve the ministry of December ninth, twenty twenty one, open session. So, second.
Second.
All those in favor, we are still gonna vote on those.
Yes.
All those in favor, Mr. Shee, yes, this going.
Yes.
This scholar.
Yes.
And I'm standing as I was not at. Next up is the warrants.
I've reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, December sixteenth, twenty twenty one, five hundred and forty two thousand, twenty seven dollars and three cents. January sixth, twenty twenty two, five hundred and seventy eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty one cents. And school payroll warrants, December sixteenth, twenty twenty one, one million fifty one thousand, fourteen dollars and thirty nine cents. December thirtieth, twenty twenty one, one million forty nine thousand, sixty four dollars, sixty six cents. December thirty first, twenty twenty one, nine hundred and sixty dollars. I wish to enter them into public record.
So without objection.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just quickly. I just wanted for the sake of the public kind of the. Ms. Stern is not here tonight. She recently had a passing in her family, the passing of her father, right before the holidays, and she's unable to make it at this time.
Thank you. Okay. And obviously, the condones the entire school. Okay, next up, we have a student room set of update. Do we have Malia and or Zoe?
Hi, guys.
Zoe's not gonna be here today.
Yeah, Zoe's not here tonight, so it's just gonna be me, but I still have to update, so. Okay.
Malia, hang on one second, we can't hear you.
We're in progress.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little bit better, yeah.
Okay, wait, let me see if I'll try and get closer to the thing. Is this okay for you guys?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, perfect, sorry about that. Um, okay, so from the GCS and from Dr. Marcus, the GCS has officially adopted the sea turtle as their school mascot. Students and families made proposals on a schoolwide survey as well as writing persuasive essays for students to try and reach a consensus by making strong arguments for why one animal might be better than the other. Sea turtles came out on top and they couldn't be more thrilled. Teachers have begun doing sea turtle research and art activities and students and staff have begun wearing sea turtle designs. Plans are being made for new connections with conservation groups, school songs, and other sea turtle themed events, which is really cute. For the LGN, the students and staff of the LGN were excited to get back to school after break. They were particularly excited about the COVID dogs and sheriff's department coming to the LGN this week. The children were happy to be able to pet Hunter and watch her at work. It was truly amazing to see her sit when she got the scent of COVID. The students were also thrilled to see themselves on the news. For the yell, Mr. Gagan said, "The only thing I would say is how I have been so impressed with our students and their ability to go with whatever we are asking them to do, whether it's wearing their mask correctly, giving space and continuing to be respectful, responsible, and safe. They have been excellent. For our faculty and staff, I cannot say enough about them. They are incredible professionals who are doing everything in their power to be here for our students each and every day and support their students as much as possible. They are awesome. Each day has brought a unique challenge, but our educators continue to do their best no matter what. I can't thank them enough." The middle school boys and girls basketball seasons are both well underway and both teams are putting forth an amazing effort. The middle school wrestling team has made a return for the first time since the start of the pandemic, which is great for them. The eighth grade representatives for student council made a visit to Norton Senior Center over the holidays to drop off homemade gift cards and, sorry, homemade gifts, cards, and treats. The visit was very well received and everyone involved enjoyed the experience greatly. For Norton High School, it has been a crazy transition back to school after break, but there are some cool things going on. From before break, the hallway decoration competition for Spirit Week was extremely competitive with really creative hallways for all classes. I think it was. The freshmen did like a jungle theme and then the sophomores decorated their hallway like Candyland. That was really cool. I liked that one. And then juniors, we did like a carnival and seniors did Star Wars, which ended up winning in the end and they were victorious. Other than that, the Deca District Competition was this past Tuesday. It was switched to a virtual competition, but dozens of students still participated. In observance of Martin Luther King Day on Monday, his speech, "I Have A Dream," will be streamed in the cafeteria during lunches. And winter sports are in full swing despite some COVID-related cancellations. And there is a very large gymnastics competition happening at Norton High School this weekend. So, yeah, I think the only thing I can think of for the high school is just the discussion with midterms right now, which we're all thinking about. And kids are already getting excited for things like prom and stuff, which is crazy, but. Yeah, that's pretty much all I have for you guys, if that's no questions or anything.
Great, thank you very much. It's good to see the sea turtle getting some love. And it's also good to see sports happening at some level in normalcy as well. Glad to hear about that. Okay. Next up, we have the first reading of section D, the fiscal policies revised policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you have the first reading, which I love. Changes that you want to make as well as public and the second reading. Unlike other years, policy manual from MASC is that we just went through the day. Was done for the purposes, or last, last couple of years was done for the purposes of ourselves. This is now coming from MASC, your representative body, grounded on concerns around constitutional legal language, concerns around legal references, which are at the bottom, clarifying the process according to new regulations if they replace best practices, and of course, clarifying regional policy distinctions because regional school districts work differently, including, for example, like Whippen, Hanson Regional is different from the Volk, which is different from us. So that's what you have is a packet of those on your section D fiscal management. And not have to go one by one, you can just go to the areas that you have concerns or questions about.
And so we're not beholden to pass any of these. Should choose.
That is correct. You can, you can, so. Yeah, so last time what we did is we, we saw, we observed that we had obtained policies that were just written for North Public Schools that were, had some real question marks about consistency. And so we went through that whole manual figure of everything. And made the changes, kept a couple of them with language that we thought was better for us, but eliminated this idea that everything we do in order to be here, some policy that we agree. So if there are questions on this, for example, there are, in my opinion, a few items here that we shouldn't, don't have to have in our policy manual. For example, DVJ dash one regional school district budget transfer authority, that has nothing to do with us.
DVJ.
One dash one regional, that is, that's not a policy that we, we have to have in our handbook because you folks aren't a regional, so it's, it's, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to encompass that. If you wanted to change some language around budget planning, what we can also do is incorporate and make those changes if you so choose. So it's really up to the.
So there's multiple regional school?
Yes.
I assume you can strike that all.
Yeah, the idea is that present you with the packet and then say, listen, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna come forward in our second reading, those pack, those things that are aligned to us and things about the. Now, if it's a regional that makes a comment about how they do something with us, that's fine to happen here because that actually helps to protect us. But if it's just, this is how the regional does it, then I don't think we should go there. And I'm happy to go through it for you and just pull those out as much as possible.
So, yeah, I think, I think sort of regional makes sense. Anybody, anybody thoughts on this, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think even looking at the DVG one on the budget adoption, I mean, our timelines are set for the most part by the town. And we have our vote and discussions, I mean.
Yeah, so all it does really.
There's not really a lot of leeway in our budget process.
No, and so this one for like the budget planning one is, it, you know, it doesn't use dates, for example, it uses more of this general jargon. And, but then it takes things like the budget processes superintendent to school committee, school committee is the authority. Right, and that's the process you should do. So it clears it up that the school committee will engage in to advance planning with staff community involvement. It's actually the superintendent will do that on your behalf, bring it to you. If you have further questions, I take it back to them and so on and so forth. The one time we have that cleared would be a public hearing. Or if you put it into your, into your regular meeting and you want to further input, so when I do my presentation with Matt and Gene and Jen, excuse me, and anyone else that comes, the fact is at the end of the day, anybody in the public will also, because it's a budget, it's a line item, then our agenda can also ask questions. So I'll go back and strike those under the cap.
All right, so. No particular word, I, issues with it or. First, I guess these are. But they, they make perfect two, school council.
Yeah, so every school has a school council.
Who was our school council?
Not, not every school building has a school council.
Okay, so that's, that's the what is the.
That is a voting body that has the right to provide you folks with recommendations.
Do we call it something else?
Site council.
Okay.
Sorry. But it's the same, the, the language in the law is school councils.
Okay.
It's actually not been a good process for us, the school council, because of our budgetary process. I think it's something that they need to do in like November, December, so that they can get it to us by January, so that if they say we want a librarian at the Yale full time, they can present, they can send that up to the process as a recommendation from the site council, which also supports the possibility.
Okay, so then this, that's.
That's a process.
It's actually something, yeah, okay.
So would, would the site council? So you guys meet with each building leader, the site council have to meet with them prior.
So what happens is they, they're supposed to have monthly meeting beginning later than October and every single month. Typically, it's May, not June, but it should be June as well, and they're supposed to be, and literally there's a teacher, there are teacher representatives and their parent representatives stand as the building principal. And they sit and they discuss the changes to the student handle. For example, at the high school, they're always done through the site council first. Staff, then they come forward to you folks. So they go through that process of what people think. But we should be instituting a little bit more of that process within the annual budget process as well.
Section DVC, I, I should know this, but I think our, our town charter specifies when the select you know, is this like, was a date for the, for the budget? I don't know if it is in fact December thirty first, but it's not, we should, we should clarify something.
That's correct, which one was that one?
It's in DVC.
DVC.
Like the deadlines, okay, so.
We're selecting the authority to impose a date as early as December thirty first, which is make sure you got.
It just says as early as December thirty first.
We have, but I, but I think we, I think we have it in our, in our town charter.
We do, it's a, it's, it's, they, the budget has to be provided to the FinCon and ordered select for eight weeks prior to the scheduled town meeting.
Okay, so that's what it should say.
That's what it should say. Or you could actually, the easiest thing to do is to say, ask for the town charter of North Massachusetts, because that could also change.
Uh, that's, yeah, that's fine too, so, but it should not say December thirty first. Small issue with DBJ.
Budget transfer authority?
Yeah, in the notes, certain provisions and policies category may be established, I think that's supposed to be may, may two words.
Be done with it, please.
In note, certain provisions in a policy in this category may be established, it's supposed to be may, established.
Oh.
Okay. And then my last issue is the DJ purchasing.
Purchasing authority or just purchase?
Just purchasing, it says DJ purchasing.
Okay.
About the, about the middle, it's actually the last two line. To promote social, the lead up to this is it shall be responsibility of the superintendent, colon, and the last one is to promote social and economic goals such as encouraging local small minority and women of this, participating in the district's purchases. Well, I, well, I think it's a very noble idea. I don't love the idea of codifying it as something that's irresponsible to viewers.
That almost sounds like soliciting directly to businesses when it has to be in a bid process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really not a big fan of that generation. Like, I, I don't love that type of thing. And, and I really don't like it to get codified as it's, it's an it shall, it's not a, you know, if, if a police or whatever. So it's, it's compulsory. I, I don't like that in there at all. And I, I would, I would move to take that out if other people don't have a objection to that. Okay. Again, while it's noble, I think you don't want to just pull your time.
No, I mean, it makes sense to, to have that be, you know, not literature, but yes, if we have, they have the option and they have to rock, absolutely get into the process, but we can't go ahead and look at that.
Right. Okay, that's, that's all I have. And I was just the first reading, right? There's no.
Yeah, there's no vote, just a first reading.
Okay. Any, any other questions on it, any, any issues or anything?
No.
No. Don't make me ask for it.
Nope.
Okay, all right, we're gonna move on then to the NEASC update with Mr. Dolman.
Hey, my audio phone? So thanks, I have a, just a brief presentation to share with you, just to remind everyone what NEASC is and also to kind of take you through the report that we just received at the end of December. So the NEASC report here is. The, it's called, yeah, we have a, go, either way, but I'm in the middle of a meeting, sorry. The NEASC is the, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and it's in charge of our decadeal or every ten year accreditation process. The last time that Norton High School was accredited was, the visiting team was in May of two thousand and sixteen. And then in the interim between that and our next visit, which actually isn't until twenty twenty eight, we had our two year report, which was in October of twenty eighteen. And then this five year report, which was submitted for October of twenty twenty one. And then we'll have a special follow up report here heading into our next ten year review. And what these are is a series of recommendations that the NEASC provides to our school for us to take action on. And our two and five year and special report are just us reporting our progress on those. So our five year report was specifically a response to the recommendations from the two year report. And then also the submission of some supporting documents. So these documents and data and ideas were all collected from our academic coordinators, a lot of data from our administrative assistants, guidance counselors, et cetera. We pulled documents from sort of redacted individual report cards to demonstrate some of the reporting on our standards as well as things like faculty meeting agendas and broader data. From the two year report, there were twenty general recommendations across seven standards that, you know, were very, very broad from things like ensure that schools' core values and beliefs drive every aspect of curriculum instruction and assessment, so it's not something that is very, very specific, like provide teacher leadership for the guidance department. And then particularly, there are five highlighted recommendations across four of those seven standards. And those were things that we responded to kind of directly from the two year report that we had built in to our school improvement plan and things like that. Just some highlighted commendations from the report. The strong emphasis placed on developing rigorous curriculum and assessments, as we've talked about actually at this body before, an ongoing process, but we continue to try to make headway into that, making them rigorous and aligned with standards. The expansion of the staff, that's something I really appreciate, certainly this body and Dr. Biet is supporting. I kind of cut off the recommendation, the full, or sorry, the commendation, the full commendations in the full report, but things like special education teachers, guidance counselors, dean of student, other full time teachers and staff have really helped both limit class sizes as well as support our students. Some of the increase in cross disciplinary courses that have been developed over the course of the year, things like forensic science. The reorganization of our student support team, definitely a big credit to Amy Benner on the assistant principal at the high school for this, as far as putting together a multi tiered system of support. Jen Young, our NHS advisor, put together something that the NEASC committee was very impressed with, was our school alumni who come back to host a college day and provide sort of guidance to our juniors and seniors. And then also certainly something that's gonna be really important moving forward is the portrait of a graduate. And the collaboration that took place before I arrived here in the district in order to develop that. The reason why I really note that is because the vision of a graduate is what NEASC calls it, is what our entire next accreditation process will be based on. And these are some of the recommendations from the report. The development implementation of a way to communicate student progress towards twenty first century expectations. We're actually be transitioning that to the portrait of a graduate, so we'll be figuring out ways again to make sure that we're reporting on individuals as well as across the schools, sort of progress towards those things. Again, you know, develop, continuing to work on our assignments or our assessments within all departments, developing, implementing a system to make sure that, excuse me, that we're mentoring students, we're definitely doing that work with our LLB. That's something that they were impressed with some of the changes we made during the pandemic and then wanting to see us carry that through, which is work that we're trying to do at the high school to put in place sort of advisory like sessions within our LLB. And also taking a look at our schedule to make sure that it affords more opportunities for our teachers to collaborate together in order to continue to develop cross disciplinary classes as well as obviously looking at things like student data and making sure that our assessments are common and collaborated on. So those are things that are all kind of ongoing. The recommendations were things that I think we feel really comfortable tackling in the next two years for that special report. And then finally, just to give you a little bit of a preview of in a few years, what you'll be hearing about. NEASC has kind of streamlined their process in two thousand and sixteen when Norton High School went through it. They had a system that was divi- designed on seven standards with over fifty two indicators to respond to. They have kind of streamlined that to reduce redundancy. We'll be taking a look at five different standards with thirty four guiding principles within those standards for our decadeal report coming up here in, starting in two thousand and fifteen with a self study and then culminating in that site visit in two thousand and eighteen. So can I answer any questions from the report?
Any questions?
I don't have any.
No?
Yeah.
Glad we're accredited.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ethan, just a quick follow up. With the changes to the standards, do you have any idea of how we can potentially add our, some of our leader, teacher leaders, maybe yourself or Amy, others to the NEASC list to be all site visits? Because I think one of the things I've learned is that as those indicators change, what we, what we sometimes get is people that haven't seen them in practice before, like what you're really trying to look for when you go in at a site visit, so I'd be fully supportive of getting those teachers that are willing to, it's probably gonna be post COVID, willing to travel to any of the New England states to do an actual visit based on those principles and based upon our standards and based on, you know, at the high school level, so just put it out there when you, when you get that opportunity, including for yourself, I think it's important.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, to see the process from that side before going through yourself is a really good recommendation and definitely, I think we have some teachers who've done some in the past under the old system, so getting them to go into the new one will be really important too.
My compliments to you and the staff on the follow up report. Being fully accredited, which is, you know, something that is kudos to the staff administration of Norton High School.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Go feed those kids.
It's bath time.
Okay, next up, we've got the review and vote on the article sewer connection.
Yes, so this requires us just to come back. As you know, we pulled the article at, in your town meeting based on the sewer line connection going along with the athletic complex. That has become much more complicated of a situation. And so we are gonna put forward a article with a number to be determined, of course, lowest number that we can get, but the project, as you know, has a situation that is very quirky. We consent saw us liquids out but not solids. We have a sewer line that is now connected in front of the school, so that's no, I mean, when the, when the high school was redone, that's not an accusation, it just wasn't there. So the rationale here is to see if in fact we can get funding. Of course, the projects could still come back completely underfunded and be able to do this, but it's gonna be a significant more amount of money because of the way the line is drawn. So what happens is it goes from the high school fully behind to the behind of the yellow, where actually the athletic complex will be going. We can eventually just cut those off and leave everything there, or we can clean it all out and get it all done. It won't impact the, impact it in a negative way, it's done all the time. But then that would mean that the Yale school is independently connected to full sewage to West Main Street, and same thing with the high school. And that supports the project in, or the sewer line, which, you know, it puts two big buildings connected to it, which is only gonna support flow, which in the end only supports all of the stuff that they have to put in to make sure that it's clean and all that other stuff. I'm not a sewer expert, although I've done more sewer connections than the one that I ever want to do.
Let's say it's been a couple, yes.
We recognize that this, I recognize that this could be have a lot of questions because of the way it happened, but I think it's, I have to be the deadline of the article, so I, of course, I'm meeting that deadline, could always withdraw it and come back a few years from now, or. But this should be the process that we, we, we.
Okay, are we voting on an actual article or just the placeholder?
Just the placeholder at this time. Yeah, so you're, you're voting on allowing me to put a placeholder on a sewer project article, so put it to deadline, but it's.
Okay.
Which is. I don't have it in front of me, but it's coming up.
Does anybody have objection to that or any questions?
No.
Okay, then I would entertain the motion to allow Dr. Ben to attach a placeholder article for a sewer action.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Sebastian? Okay, moving right along there, so we have the update on the acceleration tutoring program.
Yes, so I believe that Mia Carrer is on tonight. I don't know if she's gonna come on, is she on there?
I'm here, hello, everyone. Mia. Thank you.
A little informal, if you will, and I want you to talk a little bit about what you do in your resume and then finish up with the information I asked you to bring. So Mia, the position, this position is actually a tutoring position with an acceleration program that we put within the budget coming out of COVID, it's budget funded, so on and so forth. And we posted it internally and we just didn't, didn't have anyone that was interested, which is fine. And so we put it out there and this nice Portuguese lady, right? Which we, we don't know each other, but we know other people that we know, because we come from small worlds, came forward and we really liked her because, give us a little bit about you.
Um, yep, so I'm Mia Korea, I, I'm currently a high school Portuguese world language teacher at Global Learning Charter Public School in New Bedford. Um, and so I am doing, currently doing my doctor at Northeastern. And I'm working as the virtual tutor, tutoring coordinator for grades one through eight. It's been great working with the tutors. And I don't know, do you want me to start talking about, a little bit about how the program has been going? Okay. All right, so the, the program started on, just after Thanksgiving on the twenty ninth of November. So we've had a few weeks with a few weeks in between of break, you know, of course, we had winter break and then we took a week off coming back in, starting back up this week. We've had a total of eighteen different students participate with some of them having up to eleven sessions so far, which is great. Um, obviously, we would like to see the number grow and, and we're working on that number growing because we have nine excellent tutors available and ready to tutor on diverse range of grade levels and content experience as well as, you know, experience in special education. And so the program runs Monday through Friday from three PM to seven PM. Students are allowed to sign up for two, up to two forty five minute sessions per week. And there have been students that have been taken advantage of both of those sessions weekly. And so currently, the programs, again, from grades one through eight, we would love to see that expand in the future. And we're currently focusing on ELA and literacy and mathematics. We did hold a parent town hall at the start of the program where we had a handful of parents participate. They asked great questions, they followed up in emails. I've had tons of parents reach out recently since I put out a new communication to teachers and it, it seems like teachers are really getting that information spread to parents, given the fact that I've been getting lots, tons of emails this week from parents. And yeah, so we're just, we're just looking to see if we can grow the number and I'm excited to work with, with the teachers and, and the parents as well. Does anyone have any questions?
Great.
Uh, one through eight.
And do we have, is there a typical target student or is it everybody?
It's open to any student via the student wanting to do it, the parent wanting to do it, or a teacher recommendation. And they go through Mia and then Mia helps to coordinate the whole thing online. The parents can choose the 45-minute session that's aligned to the teacher at the grade level. They can't do it with their own teacher, which is always an issue. But the, the nice thing about this is that you can work around that after-school schedule. I know it's virtual and sometimes we get sick of that, but what happens with the, with the physical one after school is everything to do with transportation and then what happens? So this is the child's going home. You've had dinner and you want to do a six to 6:45 literacy lesson with Mrs. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so in third grade, they line it up. We kind of knew that after the first of the year, we'd probably see an uptick, so Mia, it's great to, to hear that. Mia is also working on her, not only her doctorate, but also becoming a, a director, supervisor, administrator. So you never know, it could be recruiting her at the same time. And then, and then the other part is just, we really want this to work and give people that flexibility that before, before that would just be physically after school. And we just don't have, it's not even a funding source, it's just people are doing so much after, right after school. Some kids, three o'clock is great. For the LG student, 4:15 or 4:30 is probably better, just because when they get home, they can grab a snack and then we're also thinking, this is free to parents, no cost to them whatsoever. Except for the time and effort of making sure that the child is getting on because we are, you know, paying a professional to be there. And then the, the last part is we are looking at expanding this to kind of a homework center and then expanding that to more of a, I hate to say it, but secondary model, a six to 12 model. And so I think you'll see a little bit, Mia and I will be doing some following up because we really think that this is a model of the future, that, that this type of, this type of idea is, is a wonderful way of trying to get things done and we wanted to also work for homework. Right now it's all about skill sets, we wanted to work for homework as well. So I think you're going to see that in the future.
And I think you guys would know this better than me, but I think it would probably catch traction a little better for high school.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yes.
A better audience for the need for tutors, so.
Right, and we also, you know, one of the things that we haven't opened it up to, but I know that this program that we, the software is a, it's a, actually it's a five-year contract, but it's, it's a three plus two, it's, it's we, we paid X number of dollars for three years, but we have it for us as five years. And basically, we are the first community in the Commonwealth to do it, but this program is actually in the city of Los Angeles, Vegas, I mean, it's in big, huge cities with 50, 60, 70,000 students. They're actually going to be coming out, I believe in February, and Mia and I will coordinate something, but they're going to be coming out because they want to see other programs running and get ideas from it to make it better. You utilize her expertise now in the program on how the program's software can be easier to utilize if it's complicated, if it's got a step, too many steps for the kids and all that stuff.
So, so the tutors are eternal teachers.
Our tutors are internal teachers and we have one, we have, yeah, and we have, and I have to tell you, so the Commonwealth in Massachusetts always has interesting rules, right? Because it, it's, it's one of those, right, because it's one of those things where I'll, could, 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 what, could the Norton School Committee take a vote to say for the purposes of COVID, we're in, we're supporting families, we're going to pay our own teachers, yeah, you could, but the conflict of interest law comes into play because of you're making money. So it, it's, it's just, you know, these are the little things that you wish you could put aside because then if, like Mia and I have talked about in her district as a public charter school, it's not as much of an issue, if you will, for them. So, you know, it is what it is, we're doing our best. We have eight Norton public school employees, I think one from outside, if I remember correctly, and if, if the program grows and we have to find more people, we'll put it out to our teachers again and then we'll find other teachers from outside. We always feed our first people first. Not only because of the contract language, which is important, it's an agreement between the school committee and the NTA, but because we think our teachers are great and we want them to work with kids, so we thank the teachers for it. Mia, thank you so much for taking the evening and, and coming out to a school committee, we appreciate it very much.
Oh, no problem. I know, I would just like to add, I agree, I, I do think I really enjoy the convenience of this program for the students. I, I agree, Dr. Bianna, that, you know, some kids are, have an activity directly after school, but then they can go home and, and have this convenience, this convenient schedule. And also I think just with everything, you know, that's going on right now with COVID too, you see tons of school districts having to cancel their after-school programs to limit that face-to-face. And, and I think it's great that we have this virtual option for them.
I think it's going to skyrocket with homeworks, with the homework center approach. I think it's going to go through the roof. Just having somebody who can be there to address an algebra two question that you're not understanding for 15 minutes will make a huge change.
I agree.
We'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think that this program, oh, it's okay. I think as I was the chairperson is when COVID sort of started and I remember having some.
So you're responsible for it?
Yeah, it was really sort of a trial by fire to be the chairperson during that, but I think what we've talked a lot about was sort of because we went very quickly into remote and then even sort of starting that next false sort of year, we were hybrid and I think we were all so concerned about what were students losing or missing or sort of that catch-up. So I think these programs are kind of essential right now to give students, and I agreed to, and as I wish it was in the high school, because I think they would get a lot more. Students in the high school would really probably utilize it and get the benefit of a multitude of options for courses and for learning, but I do think it's important if we could somehow, and Joe, I don't know how this is sort of spread throughout the community, if it's just word of mouth teachers or I know that your email blasts are often hopeful to kind of garner more attention. I just think that families who are concerned about their children falling behind because of even just the stress of COVID, I mean, you know, I think we just have to remember, we can have kids in school for, you know, the six hours a day, but that doesn't mean that they're really ready to learn at that moment. I think that there's a lot of emotional needs for children right now. And you and I talked about this just the other day, that there are studies being done right now about sort of newborns and infants who are really sort of having a delay in development because of COVID. So I think we really need to give students in Norton every opportunity to have.
That's what this is, I mean, it's.
To have any additional 45 minutes or you said twice a week, so an hour and a half, you know, during the week. I think it's just really important that families know it's there.
We agree, we're going to expand it and that's.
So thank you, Mia.
We wanted to be, is just to kind of give you a little excerpt, you know, of how it's going, but then also note that we want to grow this and and you'll see, you'll see it in our budget presentation for next year again, that this is not just a one-time thing, it's just another way to support families, especially because we're still coming out of this COVID and especially because of the comments you just made. So, thanks again, Mia.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have some discussions about the LG.
Yeah, so Principal Kathy Luke has announced her formal retirement, or resignation for the purposes of retirement. Which I'm sad to see, as you probably would guess, Kathy has been a tremendous leader at the LG through some of the most difficult times, even before COVID with issues that, that have happened at the LG with, with students and families and all of that. But I think she wants to go on and do some other things as well as as she says, you know, maybe come back at a once in a while, do some things with us or with others. I think she wants to stay in education in some way, shape or form, but I'll let her tell you that when the time comes. So we're trying to get out early, as you can imagine. I do think using NestJet worked last time, it's not overly expensive, it's a budget, I, I did budget for it because I knew a year ago that this was a very good potential, basic discussions we had had. I've asked Jen to kind of oversee, we'll reach out to the committee for someone to be representing the committee round one. Mostly the postings and then of course we'll have teachers and powers and all of that, parents. And then bring me three candidates, three viable candidates, that would be, you know, the traditional norm. I also think it's an opportunity for us to think outside the box about a lot of other things that the district is encompassing. And one of the things we've had some internal discussions about is how do we eventually get to an early childhood incentive K.K. program? Instead of the, what we have right now, as you know from prior restructuring discussion, that's a lot, that don't work, but a lot of crossing Ts and dotting Is and a lot of emotions that go into that. So we have, we're going to have some internal discussions before we post on that, because I, I'm not going to be the administrator that hires somebody and one year later I have an excellent, you know, principal that I no longer is a principal and he's next to people somewhere, so, you know, that type of thing. Although that may not happen either, it could be that the person stays there. So I'm hoping to have some more specific answers for you, but we're going, right now it's going to be set to establish the same order, then we'll deal with any other changes that we make as the time actually comes, but I wanted to say that. I also just want to take a second, I know we'll celebrate her later when we talk about retirees, but, you know, it's hard to take, probably one of my, my, one of my loyal people, for lack of a better phrase, who's done some brilliant things during COVID in particular. I think Kathy has been a fantastic administrator to really bring people together. She has a fantastic staff as well, that's more of a veteran staff, it's actually turning over pretty quick right now. But, you know, they, they work well together, they're always trying to solve problems together and I think that, that shows that little school, right, 280 students, 60-plus staff, it's a, it's a small community, but it makes community if you're working effectively and efficiently a better place in many ways. So I'm happy for her and I'm sad to see her go and we have to go to those schools and myself personally.
Okay, yeah, I actually, you know, it's obviously utilities from an administration, I, I, I will say anecdotally, I, I thought that during COVID, she struck me as being particularly good at collaboration.
Yeah.
She, she seemed to, to me to stand out as, as somebody, recently people, it's okay, how are we doing this, you know, so. Anyway, it's a big loss for us, sorry, sorry to see her go, but at the same time, very happy for her.
Very happy for her, yes, yeah.
I wish I could join her.
Yes. The timeline is for this. I would like to have somebody named, I would say probably by now later than maybe the week after April vacation. So I'm thinking aggressive. There are tons of positions open right now, finding new candidates. We know there'll be candidates that want to come here, we know that from the last round. So that's going to be a good thing. It's just finding the right match of a leader for that building, right? It's all about the match. And the match is about the building, it's about the central office administration that collaborates. That, that's, that's, that's the key here.
Is she finishing up the school year though?
Yes.
Yeah.
June 30th, yeah.
Okay. Are you have questions or comments? No. Okay, we're going to move on February 5th, 2022 budget workshop.
We'd like to, yes, we'd like to move that actually, I think February 5th is way too early, so we're looking at the 3rd of March or the 12th of March, I'm just going to ask you to if those somewhat open, if possible.
The 5th and the 12th, you said?
Yes. Dinesh is going with the calendars full.
I know what, I can, I can tell you right now that it is, it is full on one of those weekends. We're going to have to come back to you.
Okay, so if we can keep the 5th and the 12th open, then we can defer to Dinesh and Kathleen as, as needed.
Yeah, I wouldn't probably be able to come on the 12th.
So maybe the 5th is the best day, if Dinesh can.
But I don't, I mean, I can maybe call in if you would do that.
We can, yeah.
You could.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, just wanted to let you know because that was one of the things that was in the original handout and I just wanted to make sure you were okay with that.
Yeah, if promote is an option, then I can probably.
Remote will be an option, yes.
And I can try to petition too, and to be honest, I don't want to do a skin up February 5th sometime. Do we have any other business?
Just three general statements, one, you know that the Massey has been a resident commissioner's officer from 28th of February, we don't know what that means afterwards, but it is with this one thing. I'd like to publicly congratulate Mr. Robert Balaure, Bob Balaure, our gaming students at the Yale School for being nominated for Assistant Principal with recognition from this organization, S.S.A.A.
S.S.A.A., which is the Principal Assistant Principal Association.
So kudos to him for being recognized, he's running to be potentially awarded that, that, that great, great recognition and congratulations to the Yale School for having such a great team. As the committee knows, there's a lot going on around COVID right now, in particular changes. I do plan on making some announcements as early as late in the weekend or next week about contact tracing and testing. I have had input from the Health Committee, I've had input from the Department of Health, I've had input from about 14 or 15 different colleagues, superintendents. I'm getting input from the NTA, like I always try to make sure it's part of the conversation. And so we, we're at a point right now where the resources in particular, in particular with our school nurses who are members of the NTA, who are working Saturdays and Sundays and weekends and nights and everything else. And we're going to use the science and the data to see if we can make some shifts that are, as we are declining in number, we can make some, what I would call reasonable shifts in the process. We're still wearing masks, we're not getting away from that. Regardless if you like it or not, but I do think that some of the issues around contact tracing, this variant in particular is, is an issue because there's so much of this transmission going on, regardless if you boosted it or not, or if you're two shots or if you're no shots. I think those shots are maybe a little bit more dangerous and, and there are still deaths going on. But we, we're looking at what some other districts are doing and trying to say, okay, how does that data compare? And what's happening to our resources and shifting our resources to areas that would be much more supportive, both short, short-term and long-term. So I don't think that I require a school committee vote because it's, it's not something that, that the Commonwealth has said you need to vote on, so to send it back to you, I'm willing to put myself out there and just whatever direction we go. The one tweak that I think we won't see a lot of change in probably be the old masses preschool because those students are not able to be vaccinated and we do have choice of not wearing masks. So there is a little different process there that we might continue with the contact tracing and, and, and the testing for those families that have checked off that they allow testing. So things like, I don't feel good, you go to the nurse, instead of saying, well, we vaccinated, we don't have to test you, maybe we do test and stay. If the student is positive, they go home, we start the five-day process, they can get better, they come back. Or they test negative and they go back to class. Or I don't really feel good, I want to go home. Okay, you know, we don't want somebody who doesn't feel good staying in school, even if they test negative.
We exclude her from going home.
I'm sorry?
We exclude her from going home.
Yes, yes. And we would do that also, you know, with all of our folks, so it's not our students only, but also our staff. We want to, we want to send a message that this is scary, this causes anxiety, we all know that, I've been there myself. But I do think that we need to slowly continue to peel back that onion and return to someone. See, as the numbers are coming down and as we see positive things taking place, and I will reserve my, the right to go back to full contact tracing and full testing, test and stay, if the data is showing that I'm seeing swings. I just think that that's the right thing. I'll use five and 10-day data. If I see after five days, things going in one direction, we will go back into that. Today I interviewed our seventh nurse to come to work for us. I have a contract offer, whether trying to find nurses right now is impossible. But it is what it is, our nurses are heroes. My staff are all heroes. But at the forefront of what's been happening since our return this year with COVID, our nurses have, they're just, it's, it's incredible. This morning, Doreen and I were on the phone, she, she just did forty test and stayed. Right, which is a good thing in many ways, but let's really utilize, I'm symptomatic, I don't feel good. And utilize that process, just like if you, if you had a headache and you need some time. And utilize that process, just like if you, if you had a headache and you need some time, always you just need to go home and lie down. I think we need to start thinking this way. Or, you know, I know some of you know it better than others. It's taken me a long time to get here. I have not been fast. I've been. Probably the only conservative stone in me has been this. But I'm ready for us to start to take baby steps and see where we are as a district. And then utilize data and information to get there. So hopefully, people will be patient with me and we'll go, we'll go in that direction. And lastly, you know. There's nothing more important to me than the safety of children in these schools and my staff. And so when I say this, I say from the perspective of not only the students, but I'm saying this from the perspective of the staff. I have plenty of staff that are wanting to take off their masks. That struggle with wearing their mask, right, like the kids do. But this process is all about that process. Let's do something and see what what happens. We have the support of the local Board of Health. We, other districts have had direct communication with the Commissioner's Office and just saying. Why, 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 you know, I've I've given out fifteen hundred tests and stay, rapid tests, and less than half a percent have been positive. Why, why are we doing this? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I'll get back to you and I'll communicate with you and then parents, of course, as I always do, you folks, the staff, and then, as I said, you. Thanks for your time.
Anybody have any questions on?
I just, I think it's important to note for the for the nurses, just to circle back on that for a second, because, you know, even though we've been able to have some sort of normalcy, what we consider this new normal. Our our nurses really haven't, right? They've been still in this COVID protocol for, you know, going on three years now and it's it's exhausting. And I I just, I think it's just important to to thank them as well to new work. Yeah, I just had one other thing, but I don't want to. So, well, I'm just, I'm sitting here and I don't, I hope this is gonna be okay to do, but I'm sitting here because you guys are in my direct line of sight. I keep looking at Jen's.
Giant mask?
No, name card there. And we need to update that. It's the same doctor, Jennifer O'Neil.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to congratulate you publicly. I know, yeah, yeah. I can't imagine hearing what you did, not only in raising a family, with the job that you have and during COVID. It's just awesome.
And her boss, that puts a lot on her table.
For sure. Well, not only that, but dealing with your boss. It's not always easy, but the name, the name, the nameplate just keeps standing out, so I just.
We gotta get Dan one, too, because we lost his, so.
You lost, yes.
We have no idea where it is.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you all.
I had asked Jen the other night when I saw her, we were together on Tuesday, if she's like been excited to sign her name, and she said, I haven't had to sign anything. I don't know. So I don't know if everybody knows that she's now a doctor, so at some point, we'll have you sign some document, Jen.
We'll sign a contract. We'll have to sign a check. Okay, if there's, if there's nothing else, I just would announce that next, next meeting date is Thursday, January twenty seventh. Outside of that, if nobody has any other business, I would entertain a motion for adjournment for the night.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Shee? Yes, Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Galler?
Yes.
Mr. Sebastian? Yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.